Oh, that's very forceful.
Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:28 and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to- Test?
Hello?
Hello?
Getting into it. Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 Committee of the Whole to Order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag and the states of America-
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with equity and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford. Alderwoman Purchase.
These microphones are not working.
One moment, I'll reboot the system.
No. This is not. Hello?
Yeah, there we go. We're good.
Hello? I'm here.
Bear with me, I'm bringing everyone's mic back up.
Alderwoman Notriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Chairwoman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk, I would accept a motion for the approval of the August 26, 2025 Committee Meeting Minutes.
So move Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, would you please present your Treasurer's Report?
Thank you Chair. Treasurer's Report for Corporate Fund for the month of August, beginning balance sixty-two million nine hundred fourteen thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars. We took in total receipts of fifteen million eight hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars. We had dispersments in the month of August totaling sixteen million two hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of August at sixty-two million five hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars. The ending general fund balance includes seven million five hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred six dollars, which is the ending balance, excuse me, which is the August ending balance for ARPA money. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Chair, I'd make a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report as submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Are there any presentations this evening?
No ma'am.
All right. Next, we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Madam Clerk, could you please read those ordinances? Twenty twenty-five two forty-seven and twenty twenty-five two eighty-one. Are there, would anyone like to take action on any of these? No? Okay. We will move on to ordinance number, or move on to CWP.
Twenty twenty-five three five-five, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE twenty-six oh seven dash twenty-six, six Power Edge R seven sixty server for hyper V virtualization with Matrix Systems Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and six cents for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three five-six, an ordinance authorizing a proposal with Siemens Energy Incorporated for interstate combustion turbines combustor overhaul in an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Works, twenty twenty-five three five-seven, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Hicks Gas Springfield Incorporated for the property located at part of sixty-two twenty Canadian Cross Drive for the Office of Public Works.
Move for debate.
Second.
Debate, second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of putting this on the debate agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, twenty twenty-five three five-eight, an ordinance approving the appointment of Corey W. Brown as Executive Director of Oak Ridge Cemetery for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for debate.
Um, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I would ask that this remain in committee.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we'll hold that and I assume we need to take a vote on that. So all those in favor of holding twenty twenty-five three fifty-eight in committee?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Twenty twenty-five three five-nine, an ordinance approving the appointment of Dia Langolier to the Springfield Municipal Band Commission.
Move for debate.
Debate, second.
Any discussion?
Is Dia here? I didn't-
I don't believe she's here, but she will be here next week.
Next week, okay. If I could then just speak for fellow council members, I do know Dia, she was my children's band instructor way back in the days. A really wonderful woman, great love of music, and I'm excited to see her next week for this commission. So thank you Chair.
Awesome, you're welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to closure of Mary Floor Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as Mary Floor Restaurant located at number two West Old State Capitol Plaza.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
An ordinance, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five three sixty-one, an ordinance authorizing an increase in the number of Class B liquor license by one for Peoria Road Mart LLC, doing business as Superstation located at thirty-eight forty North Peoria Road.
Move for consent, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty-two, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Soy Oahuaka Restaurant and Bar Incorporated, doing business as Soy Oahuaka Restaurant and Bar located at two old West State Capitol Plaza.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty-three, an ordinance authorizing payment of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars for settlement of Sangamon County Court Case twenty-three dash LA dash twenty-six, Anthony versus City of Springfield.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty-four, an ordinance authorizing a sponsorship to Fay Folk Art Collective for the twenty twenty-five Fay Folk Art Festival to be held no later than September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in an amount not to exceed payment of fifteen hundred dollars for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty-five, an ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of five thousand dollars to Buzzbomb Brewing Company for the twenty twenty-five Buzzbomb Oktoberfest to be held no later than September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty-six, an ordinance authorizing a sponsorship to Midwest Toy and Comic Fest for Springfield Comic Con two event to be held no later than April twenty twenty-six in an amount not to exceed payment of five thousand dollars for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty-seven, an ordinance authorizing sponsorship to Springfield Art Association for the Paint the Street event to be held June twenty twenty-six in an amount not to exceed payment of five thousand dollars for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty-eight, an ordinance authorizing sponsorship to Springfield Area Arts Council for the twenty twenty-six Levitt Amp Springfield Series to be held no later than August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six in an amount not to exceed payment of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Say I'm very excited to see this. Everybody get your lawn chairs ready?
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three sixty-nine, an ordinance authorizing a budgetary transfer of funds to allocate subrecipient expenses to the appropriate expense line during FY twenty-six for the Department of Commerce and Economic Community Connections Grant, number twenty-three dash two zero three one eight six, from one account to another within the same fund.
Motion for consent, um, Madam Chair.
Alderman Gregory.
Can I just have Ms. Ramona, can I just have a report on what's been spent on this particular grant and how much is left, please?
I can get you that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three seventy, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of eighty-four thousand six hundred and three dollars and forty-five cents using restricted federal forfeiture funds to purchase radio equipment from Motorola Solutions for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three seventy-one, an ordinance authorizing a professional service agreement and payment between the City of Springfield and Deborah Thompson Always On Consulting LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars to provide management duties for the Office of Human Resources.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three seventy-two, an ordinance amending ordinance four thirteen dash eleven dash twenty-three and authorizing an additional payment in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars with PMA Management Corporation for third-party worker compensation administrative services for the Office of Budget Management.
Um, can we just put this on debate, please?
Second. Any discussion?
Um, I see there's an increase in, you know, in the details, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Alderman Gregory.
Don't get me now. Um, I just see that, you know, in this, it says the large, large number of workers' compensation claims has caused an increase in administration costs. So, you know, I just want to have some discussion on where we're seeing that at, if there's an increase, is there things that we need to do as a council to make sure that we can try to decrease these things? Thank you.
You are quite welcome. All those in favor of putting this on the debate agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five three seventy-three, an ordinance authorizing payment of fifty thousand dollars annually from Enos Park and SHA Madison Park Place Tax Increment Funds to Springfield School District one eighty-six for twelve years for a total amount not to exceed one million two hundred thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
For debate.
Second.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you Chair. I would just like to know if someone from the city could explain, this goes back for taxable years twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-four. I'm just wondering why we're going back a couple of years?
Yeah, so this was part of a, of a promise that was made as we were looking to extend the TIF, and that would be for the lifespan of the TIF, which was discussed with the school district. The, our packet has the letter from the school district dated May twenty-first, twenty twenty, where they agreed not to object to the extension of the TIF, but we had agreed to provide these payments over the life of the extended TIF.
And I remember that part of this. I guess my question is, I thought we were making these payments.
We were not making these payments.
So the city hasn't made these payments up until now?
That's correct.
Okay, so the first payment amount will be how much? Do you know how far back we go in years? I don't remember. I looked at this over the weekend.
We go back to twenty twenty-three.
Okay. So it'll be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year and then?
We would, this authorizes the payment. We would need to, I would need to check with the available funds to see what the initial payment would be.
All right, thank you. I was just, I was surprised to see this because I, when we passed those ordinances to extend the TIFs, I thought we were already making those payments. So thank you very much.
Alderman Donilon.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I don't know who to address my question to, Counselor, since you weren't here, but I guess I'll throw them out in the air. But I don't remember voting to this agreement.
I know I didn't.
Was that a part, I don't remember that being voted on by the council.
This would, this would be the vote. I went back and looked for any votes that would have taken place during the extension of the TIF, and I couldn't find these payments as voted on or approved by council, and that's why this ordinance is being presented now.
I want to make it clear here, I'm very much in favor of the extension of the two TIFs. I think it makes sense. It's going to be good for the neighborhoods and the community, but I just don't remember the council as a part of that, and you seem to remember otherwise. But I don't remember us voting or even discussing the fact that the school, we agreed to compensate them money. I just don't remember that. Can, can we at least look into that so that I could have verification and clarification based on the discussions back then?
Why, yes.
I forget things I did yesterday sometimes, so.
I will look into it and I will, I will circulate an email to the council on it. But from preliminary research, I wasn't able to find any authority to make these payments, which is why there's an ordinance now.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Yes, so I do remember this. So this is not to extend the TIFs past. I know the Enos Park TIF was extended, both of those was extended. In fact, we added Pillsbury into the Madison Park Place TIF. That was an extension. Am I correct in that, on the Madison Park Place side?
I believe that was an extension. I don't know if we modified it as a part of this extension, but we were adding twelve years.
Okay. So the SHA Pillsbury TIF expires in twenty thirty-four. Correct. When does Enos Park expire?
I think they're both twenty thirty-four. I'd look to OPED to confirm.
So, so am I clear in saying we have not approached them to extend this TIF? This is from, from old extensions that was, that was passed?
Yes, this is nothing new. This is from the prior extensions that occurred.
Okay, all right, thank you. And has there ever been, um, payments to the school district? They get an initial payment from TIFs when we create them? Am I correct?
I would need to go back and look at each individual TIF. The way this, this comes about is we need to have, with extensions in particular, we request letters from each of the taxing bodies for support if, for the extension of the TIF, and that's where, that's where this letter of support that's attached came about. So I don't know if we made any initial payments on this TIF or either of these TIFs, but I'm, I will look that up and circulate it to the council.
Because I was educated on some things that we add our TIFs, that we make initial payment to the school districts anyway off tops before it even comes to us. So I'm just trying to, you know, get, get, get a balance on that. I know we made some of these moves with Enos Park and Madison Park Place to extend and include the Pillsbury area. We even made an agreement with the Park District, Alderwoman Conley, to give them some, some funding upfront so they can invest in the two parks, Enos Park. And I think it was like six hundred thousand dollars.
With, with the Park District, I believe you're right talking-
I remember when we did this. It was very hard to get those letters from there. Part of, part of this situation was repayment of our roof and, and all of those things was all tied together in this situation. So I definitely remember, remember this quite fairly. So that information is going to be good and help us. I don't have a problem with this. Certainly, you know, looking at some, some situations that they have in it, but I am definitely interested in, in, in the conversations. These TIFs, I mean, it's twenty thirty-four, it's twenty twenty-five. Now we've got ten years, we've got a big project over there. They're going to need some money over there. We probably need to start those conversations to extend, extend that one as well as the Far East. I know I'm interested in that and having that conversation. Thank you.
All right, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you Chairwoman. Corporation Council minds is to the extent of Alderman Gregory. So I remember this. I know I can't vote on it now, but I did push and vote on it then when I extended the TIF in Enos Park, but I didn't remember this conversation of when the payments would start. So if we did the payments for the Park District, how come we didn't do the payments for the school district? And I know it was before your time.
Right, so there was, there was nothing indicating in the files that I had or via OPED that we had committed that these payments, there was no ordinance that had been passed by the city council. So the reason this is coming about now is the representative of the school district reached out and said, hey, we had this agreement, you know, can you look into this because we haven't received payments for two years?
And they had documentation to show for, as Alderman Donilon said, he didn't remember that portion of it coming forward and being discussed with us. So it was documentation on their end, but we didn't have it in our, on our end?
Well, it's provided as attached in your packet for today, is what, is what they had, which is emails from the former mayor and then their, their letter from the school district in support of the TIF specifically references this agreement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't recall, I, when this came around, all I remember was the Park District because, and Sean, you were, you were working that to, because they were going to do something at Comer Cox, I thought, or one of the, one of the parks over there, that, you know, that was going to be beneficial and that. But I don't, I mean, I guess the thing that concerns me is number one, what does this do to our TIF as far as the money in it? Because we just, not too long ago, we just voted on some projects that were coming out of those TIFs. So this, they're going to take a big hit on this. And then the second thing is, I mean, what, what else are we going to find out that's been promised that didn't come through the city council? That's what worries me. Is there like a statute of limitations or, or something like that? Because, you know, this should have been part of the, I guess this should have been part of the, the packet that, that we got when we extended the TIF, that, with, with all the cost. And it, sure, I can tell you, I know that this was not a part of it. I do know the Park District was, because that was a big thing. And it was, it was a good thing for the, for, I want to say, was it Comer Cox?
Um, I know Enos Park, Enos Park, they have two parks over there, and yes, we-
And then some at Comer, yeah.
But H.D. Smith was generous and donated a million dollars to Comer Cox Park.
But anyway, so, I mean, is there like a, do we have seriously like a statute of limitations if, when things come, because this is, you know, if we didn't vote on it back then, this is getting kind of crazy.
So that's a, that's a case-by-case basis, and I won't get into the specific defense of, of this case, but what I will say is, for this particular promise, it's a continuing promise over the life of the TIF. So even if there was a statute of limitations defense, say for the twenty twenty-three payment, we're still running into that, into that each year, including future years where we've obligated these funds. So it wouldn't be applicable to much of this, if any of this agreement.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Alderman Williams.
Oh, oh, sorry Chair, thank you. Well, so Alderman Hanauer got to some of my questions. So I'll just ask, are there any other taxing bodies that we made promises to concerning this?
Not to my knowledge.
And so that agreement was from, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, I believe? Were we supposed to start paying in twenty-three or something like that?
So the, the agreement was, yeah, twenty twenty is, is when the correspondences are dated, and they're regarding the extension of the TIF, which would have been from, which would have been from, I believe, twenty, from twenty twenty-two through twenty thirty-four. So in twenty twenty-three-
Over the twelve years?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Carson.
Thank you Chair. Corporation Council, I know in order for these TIFs, I mean, we, it's not required, but I know you have to have sign off from all the different taxing bodies. But it's not a requirement. It's sort of just a general rule and it's a nice gesture. Is that correct?
So TIF extensions need to be approved, approved by the General Assembly, and although it's not in statute, the General Assembly requires these letters.
Right. So the question is, you know, if you recall, and obviously this was before your time, was the school district not going to give us a letter of agreement? They were not going to sign off for the TIF without the fifty thousand a year? Do we know that?
So again, I wasn't a part of those negotiations, but the way the May twenty-first, twenty twenty letter reads from Superintendent Gill, this was, it was, the approval was specifically conditioned upon this agreement.
Okay. So let's play that out. Theoretically, five, six, seven different taxing bodies could also do the same thing. And then back to, back to Alderman Hanauer's point was, I mean, we would significantly hurt the TIF should this play out with the other taxing bodies.
Yes, that is true. However, the, the school district is receiving, the, the school district has the greatest proportion of harm because they're, they have the largest share of the property tax bill.
No, I get that, but I mean, everybody is concerned about their own, you know, little area. So, so that's it. Thank you Chair.
You're welcome. Alderman Gregory.
No, I was just reading, I was reading the letter from the original, the original information. So there was a great deal of work with this. So I, I just think it's important to clarify, do we already give the taxing bodies or the school district some money off the top of the TIFs? I think that's important to know. And I think what's important to know is how much over ten, fifteen years that has accounted for? The Enos Park TIF? The fifty thousand dollars made, you know, could, whatever. The SHA Pillsbury, not really. We, we have a, a nice little decent fund even with encumbering those funds, Ralph. But, but as I said, you know, we probably need to look at extending it if we're going to do anything with, with the old Pillsbury and getting something built in that, in that particular one. That's my take. I'm interested in knowing that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, Alderman Cox.
Thank you. I'm looking at an email, May twenty-one, twenty twenty, seven forty-two PM, from Jim Langfelder to Jennifer Gill. Like with the downtown TIF renewal, the city is in agreement with a hundred thousand dollars annually for the two TIFs over the twelve-year life of the extensions for one point two million dollars. Is that why we're having this discussion is because of that sentence?
That, that sentence and, and the letter of support that was authored by-
By Jennifer Gill, which was sent at about three o'clock, I think, that same afternoon. But you're telling me that that hundred thousand dollars annually was never brought before the council?
I, I could not find that or authorization to pay it, which is why it's being presented.
That's why it's, okay, thank you.
I got a question.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you Chair. So Alderman Cox just said, I just want to make sure everybody heard it correct. You said that it, the letter came from, the money coming from downtown TIF in Enos Park or Pillsbury TIF in Enos Park?
I don't even know that it's specified.
It is in the letter that's included.
Yeah.
He said something, so I'm just making sure I clarify.
So it references the downtown TIF, and there might have been an arrangement like this with, with the extension of the downtown TIF?
I just want to make sure-
But this money is not- But, but this money is not coming from the downtown TIF.
So when he said that, I just wanted to make sure.
Enos Park and Madison Park.
Okay. So if you do see something from downtown, you gonna bring it to us? Cause I, if it's stating that, I'm not for sure why it would be stating the downtown TIF.
Uh, I think that extension happened well before this conversation, but if, if I find anything, I will bring it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, it looks like we got everyone. Um, if there's no further discussion, uh, we can vote, we're placing this on the debate agenda, correct?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Okay. Next is unfinished business, is there any unfinished business to come before this committee? Alderman Williams.
Uh, Director Fuchs and, uh, Director Lesko, please, and Director Pau- Posey. Maybe not Fuchs. Never mind Fuchs, I just needed Lesko and Posey. My, my question deals with. My, my question deals with the percentages and the residential, um, and minority participation numbers that the commission would normally do annually. Uh, you following what I'm talking about, right? So when was the last time the commission met?
That would be last year, um, the chairman of the commission has yet to call a meeting this year. Well, she tried to call one in January, but there was no quorum and there's not been an attempt to call another meeting, nor has an agenda been sent to me. We're also still waiting on the minutes from the last three meetings from last year.
So, so I asked the question because, uh, I was looking at, and, and I failed to bring the letter in. That's what I went to go check, see if it was in my box. So it's at my home, but, uh, each year annually, and you tell me if you agree, we are not, the commission does the review and, and recommends the percentages?
Yes, that is correct.
That is correct, okay, and that's why I'm asking, when's the last time they met? Cause this document is dated twenty twenty-four and I was trying to see where those percentages come. Cause for me, it's important to know how many minorities or people of color and women are on, on, on some of this stuff as well as where they live, the percentage of our residency. Residents, you know, get their preference as well as participating on some of these contracts. And then I've been told, you know, by people in the community that there hadn't been any meetings. So that I'm like, well, where is the percentages coming from? So I didn't know if you guys were like just carrying over year for year or, or, or what the situation was.
Yeah, generally, we've just carried over from year to year if nothing, if nothing new has been presented.
Because there's no meeting?
Right.
Okay.
My office has not said that, so.
Thank, okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, um, Chair, so who, who is the, who's the, who's the Chair, who's the Chair of the Commission?
So Tina Montgomery is cor- is currently the Chair of the Community Relations Commission.
Okay. And it's, you're, you're saying it's, it's her job to call these meetings, correct, sir?
Yes, for the commissions, it is the job of the Chair to call the commission and send the agenda, um, to the representative from the city. We then make sure that a ge- agenda is posted a minimum of forty-eight hours before the time of the meeting. So that way it's in compliance with the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, sir. What, what type of, just, what type of things are just normally discussed, would, would be handled in this community relations meeting?
Well, an important part is exactly what Alderman Williams talked about, and that is suggesting the number or the percentage of minority participation, um, on contracts that we have. The way the commission, at least in my mind and on paper from what I'm told, is supposed to work is, I would bring reports of what we're doing in the Community Relations Department or issues that we've heard about that are going on in the community to the commission. And they would also bring information from their various jobs, organizations, um, different things they're involved in in the city and say, this is a concern that the people are having that we think should be addressed. I would then be able to bring that information to the administration so we could figure out a plan to work on and address the issues that they've brought forward.
Ah, so that's, that's very important, absolutely. What is, what is our goal right now, what do we have it set at?
Twenty-five percent?
No, I think it's eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen. Do you know where we're at on it right now, total?
Uh, overall?
Yes, sir.
I do not.
Can, can you get that to us, please?
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you gentlemen.
Anything further, no?
No ma'am.
Great, thank you sirs. Any other unfinished business? No? How about new business? Alderman Gregory.
So I, you know, we, we have, we have about sixteen speakers that's gonna speak on a situation tonight. We know we have, um, some investigations on it, so I'm not gonna get terribly too deep in this. Um, I have seen the video as we all have, I hope we all have. Um, I've, I've had our discussions with our deputy chief, I've had discussions with chief. Um, we're gonna go through this recommendation process or this, this internal investigation process, um, with them. However, for this council and for the city wise, um, you know, I've been reading that the Massey Commission's contract is gonna end with, um, the county, and I think it would be good for us to indulge and engage them, um, on the city side. I, I know we just recently had a meeting with, um, at Southeast where we talked about, um, our commitments and not letting things like, like the Sonya Massey incident happen. Um, of course, you know, things that, that were, um, sent to the county a lot from the Massey Commission wasn't taken up. Um, but we're a different body and I'm very, very interested in, uh, an independent body, not political. Looking at not only policing things, but economics, health, things that, that, that come to our desk a lot, um, from, from our unsheltered community, um, to, to, you know, the growth that the east side desperately needs. Um, a- a- as well as making sure that we continue to grow and concentrate on, on policing community relations. So, um, that is my recommendation, um, um, to this council. Uh, I am prepared to work with my caucus members and those, um, in this sense to, to, to figure out how we do this and, and what, what an ordinance looks like to present, um, before this council, so, um, thank you.
Thank you Alderman, and I would like to co-sign what you just said, and, um, please let me know how I can help us move forward on that.
Thank you.
Alderman Carson.
Thank you Chair, I just, uh, I wanna give a thanks and a shout out to, uh, the mayor and had to be half a dozen directors at the first Community Connections slash Ward meeting in Ward Seven on Saturday. For an hour and a half, we probably had twenty-five or thirty people moving in and out of there, uh, with a whole host of questions. C W L P questions, uh, speeding questions, um, speeding questions, Chief, and, and some long grass and some property questions, those are just a few of the main topics, but, uh, it was good, it was successful. And again, I, I want to appreciate, uh, I want to thank the, uh, the administration for coming out to Ward Seven, so, thank you.
Yeah, congrats on a good event. Um, Alderman Williams.
Thank you Chair, um, is the Chief here, Chief Police? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you over there way. Uh, if you would come, got a couple of questions that, uh, I wanted to ask you, but, you know, I wanted to start, you're the Chief of Police and you're appointed by elected official, the mayor, but, but, but you're a public servant or a public official?
Correct.
And you meet with the public. So when, when a group comes to me and says to me, uh, the police chief won't meet if X Y Z is in the room, is that, is that a situation that you're going through right now?
We've ma- we've come to an agreement that we're not gonna meet with a certain particular group, if there's a particular person in the room, yes.
Who, who is we?
Springfield Police Department.
Okay, so the department as a whole decided this?
I decided that, uh, for my staff, correct?
So, so the others are just punished?
No.
The rest of the public is punished because of one person is what, what, the way, way that's coming off?
That's incorrect. I, I offered to meet with the Faith Coalition, uh, that group that we're, we're speaking of, uh, without that particular person in the room, and I've yet to hear back from them, I provided them with dates and times I was available and have yet to hear back.
But that's like telling a group who can be in their meeting and not in their meeting. And, and I'm not getting it because you're a public official. I mean, you, you're supposed to meet with anybody in, in, in the public unless your life is in danger or something of that nature. I can't see why you wouldn't go to the meeting no matter who Faith Coalition has in the meeting.
I understand your concern, we had tried to meet with this particular person, we actually entered into a diversionary agreement with this person, uh, post the, uh, incident out in front of the police station, uh, and this particular person said that they ref- this particular person said that they, said that they were, they were not interested in doing free work for the Springfield Police Department. So at that point, we decided that the relationship probably wouldn't work.
Okay, well, I, I'm here not for the.
The Chief has the floor, thank you.
I'm sorry.
And Alderman Williams, of course.
I'm sorry, uh, but I'm, I, I, I'll, I'll look further into it, Chief, a- as being fair. I would hope that you would meet with all citizens and any citizen. Um, I, I don't know the mayor's opinion, I haven't spoken to the mayor on why, uh, she would allow employee to pick and choose who they meet with unless it's a, a life or death situation, standing in front of a room, addressing a group of people, and because one person's in there for whatever reason, it really shouldn't matter. Cause what if the individuals is in several groups? Then you're not gonna meet with none of those groups, i- i- I mean, I don't understand why we're operating this way.
I think it's important to understand that we've been meeting with the Faith Coalition, uh, and, and a litany of other groups and a laundry list of those groups, uh, on a regular basis ever since I've been in the command staff. We plan to continue, uh, with those working relationships with all of those groups. Uh, just because one person may be omitted from that does not mean that we cannot have a working relationship with that particular group or any other group.
But, but you're controlling who's in their meeting?
I'm not controlling it, they, they've decided to add this person in. They were not part of the group when we first had these, uh, initial, uh, conversations and meetings with this, with this particular group.
So wouldn't that be like controlling their membership if a, a new person joins? But you, you're deciding that, oh, but I don't like the new person, so now I'm not going to meet. I, I just feel that's wrong. Like I said, I haven't talked to the mayor about it, but I feel like it shouldn't matter. I- i- if you're meeting with the public, you're meeting with the public. I don't, I don't think the picking and choosing, that's a bad road to go down, Chief, I think. I do like the hard work that your predecessor and others put into meeting with these groups, I like that. I'm glad that these meetings are taking place, but if we're gonna start dictating who can be in the meeting and who can't, that's not right.
Yeah, we'll continue with those meetings.
I hope you'll reconsider, I hope you'll reconsider.
We'll continue with those meetings, with all of our, uh, all of our groups and our community stakeholders.
Thank you.
Um, thank you Alderman Williams for bringing that to light, and Chief, before you go, I would like to say, it's also concerning to me that a decision to exclude a person would have been made, um, and is now being enforced upon the whole department. Um, we saw in that video that de-escalation is something that the Springfield Police Department needs to focus on. And disagree or, or, um, completely writing someone off for counting them out is, is not a way to de-escalate tensions or disagreements or what have you. Um, so that's my, my food for thought on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I hope you'll consider. Um, okay, Alderman, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, um, Chief, I don't have a question for you. Uh, I just, I wanted to follow up on, on Alderman Gregory's comment.
Sure.
I, I think it's important, um, Sean Woodley, as you pointed out, that we, the, the Massey Commission is gonna come out with recommendations. Um, we know that most of the people who are impacted by, by what happened, uh, what's going on with the Massey Commission and, and those recommendations. There's a lot of work groups going on, a lot of detail. Um, I'm also looking forward to seeing those recommendations and, and partnering, um, in ways that we can move this, our entire community forward. Because that's, there's a lot of good people doing very good work on that, so.
Yes.
Um, also just want to make sure that we stay on top of that and, and engaged as a city with those recommendations when they come out.
Absolutely.
And then I also, as I was, I was recently reminded you, um, on a completely different, completely different topic, want to point out to, um, council members that, um, in three days, um, one of our fellow aldermen will be yet another year older. I think he's already, all right?
Had to say that, right?
I did, yes. So congratulations, happy upcoming birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you Chair.
You're welcome. Uh, Alderman Gregory.
No, I just, um, following up, and, and Chief, you don't have to come up, but I, I do, I, I, I still would like to meet with not only our command staff and the, the mayor if necessary, and, and, and our caucus with our stakeholders. Um, and that's what I was really a, a little touched about, you know, before is, is that, you know, we wasn't included with our, our, these stakeholders and, and we want to be included in these stakeholders. As far as, you know, the standard who, who, who is excluded from these meetings, this is what we want people to do. We want people who, to join groups, um, like Faith Coalition and learn and be sent off to trainings. Um, I, I wish I had the time to go to those type of trainings, cause they don't come too far. So this is what we want, we want, we, I ain't scared, we want people to grow. And, 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 you know, I can tell you, um, Tiara lives in my ward, Ken lives in my ward. These is probably the two roughest individuals. And we done went back and forth and I still talk with them, we still have conversations and everything, and we have to do that, we. And I get it, what happened on the porch, we don't want it, you know, we have our views, she has her view, there's some harsh feelings there. But we gotta get over that shit. We gotta get over it, and that, while we snapping, that mean you too. Because we, hit me out. Because when we talked, I asked you, is there an officer that you trust? And it was Leach. So I want you to keep working with Leach, so we can close this gap. Because we can't, we can't do this community police thing without all of us in here that care. All of y'all come that care, and we want, and I want to bridge that gap. And if, right now you a buil, probably ain't gonna talk and stuff, but Officer Leach is somebody that you trust and I want you to keep working with him so we can bridge this gap. We can't force the man to let you in the meetings, but we're gonna keep working with him. And I want you to work with Leach and, and so we can finally all get to the table, including you. Okay, I don't want to move forward in our community and all that we need to do without you. But I, and I want you at the table, and I think you made the great steps of going to the Faith Coalition, joining them, bringing all the good things that you have and learning the good things that they have for you. Okay? And, and that goes for Chief, I'm telling him too. We gotta close this gap, okay, that situation happened, it's over, it's done with. Now we gotta close the gap, and I'm not saying that you haven't tried, I'm not saying that he hasn't tried. But I'm saying it now, cause both of y'all live in my ward. Ken done jumped my case about a, a situation, and we had that since, that conversation on Facebook publicly, no harm, no foul. We, we still talk to this day. All of us, we have to do that. Being a mayor, we fuss and we fight for show, I think everybody think we don't like each other. And we just had an excellent time of baseball game with some young kids who whooped our butt. But, but this thing, it doesn't come overnight, cause I used to be just like y'all when I first got up here. Whole grudges, yell screaming, all this craziness, walk out and I speak to nobody, cause I'm mad. But as I'm growing, I'm forty-plus years old, I'm saying that's not the, we, we can't do that, we gotta keep dialogue going. Cause that's the only way that we gonna get through. Now we can split as a community, hell, the officer that, 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 that we mad at, he lives in Ward Two too. He lives on the east side too. My brother right back there, he from the east side too. When I came in, it was like eighteen black police officers, now there's like thirty-one. So we, we worked hard, we work hard, we been through some, some stuff in the city. And I'm tired of these meetings, I'm tired of talking about this silly shit. So, well, hit me, hit me, hit me, I'm, I'm just, I'm just so tired of it, thank you. We gotta get it together, and that's just how I feel, and that goes for everybody, I'm, I'm, I'm sick of the, the garbage, thank you.
Thank you Alderman Gregory, and, uh, thanks for reminding me. And I'd just like to say, um, you know, that we're up here and, and we're, this is our job, you know? So we have to behave in a certain way and speak in a certain way. Um, I'm not wanting to tone police anybody in this gallery, anybody who's, who's gonna come up and talk. But please, no, you're coming to our job to speak to us, address up the Chair, address me, uh, when you do come speak. Try to be as, uh, professional and respectful as you know how. Respect everybody by respecting your time limit, uh, and please don't use profanity on purpose.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. I don't, I don't know that that was on purpose. Um, yeah, Alderwoman Purchase.
I would have gabbled him.
I know you would have.
Oh, I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Alderman Gregory said, you know, you, um, our caucus was able to view the video. You know, you, our caucus was able to view the video at 4:00 yesterday with Assistant Chief Leach. Even when I got appointed and there was things going on downtown and Leach was with me, I noticed that, and I'm going to be very specific and intentional, I noticed that the black community respected him. I see Mr. Stapleton in the audience, I see Tashiana in the audience, I see a variety of people who, there's different age gaps, and we all respect each other, and this is the common denominator that's bringing us all in this room, am I correct? I see everybody shaking their head, so I want to make sure, I, me and Sean requested that Assistant Chief Leach and the Automatic Black Caucus meet with the community, and we asking everybody that's sitting in this room, which we know more people will come out as well, but to be respectful. There has been a distrust in the community between the black community and law enforcement, and we think between the three of us, people who you see look like you, that we're able to bring the community together for a common goal, and we have people in this audience from all areas of walks of life that also respect us too, and we can bring this together. So we're putting the ball back in you all's hands, and we're requesting us three for the police department and the Springfield Automatic Black Caucus to come together and do a community meeting with you all, but we're asking to make sure that there's some respect in the room, that people are able to voice their opinions and be able to receive what's being said to them. So I hope that we can do this, we have police in the room right now. Tim, you are there for us on the east side of Springfield, people respect you as well. So we need you to be in that room, as well as Officer Pete, Sergeant Peters, and other members of the community that we look up to. So I'm urging, and I wanted to say that publicly while I'm sitting here looking at multiple faces in the room that I respect, and I'm asking for you all to respect us as well when we bring this together. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Alderman Cox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank Chief and the command staff for making yourselves available yesterday, appreciate that very much. Secondly, though, still relates to SPD, but not the same topic. Michelle Lotterback retired, I think, one week ago, and I actually meant to bring it up last week during the meeting, and I totally forgot, but she was the evidence tech, the head evidence tech, I don't know exactly what her title was, I can't remember. But she's a 30-plus-year employee in public service, most of which was with the city of Springfield. She retired last Tuesday, and she's not here. I doubt she's watching at home, she's probably having a margarita or something. But I just want to publicly say congratulations to Michelle. She's been a friend for a long time, and she taught me how to be a young state's attorney when it came to the evidence, chain of custody things and what have you. So she's helped a lot of people over the years, and so I just wanted to give her a big, hearty congratulations. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, congratulations to her. All right, any more new business? No, okay. With that, now it's time for citizens' requests to address the committee. Are there citizens who wish to address the committee, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
All right.
First speaker is Roy Walton. All right, next speaker, Cloney Barney. Sorry if I butchered your first name.
Dear City Council, my name is Kwani Barney, and I serve as a community organizer with Faith Coalition for the Common Good. I am formally inviting you to join us on the upcoming town hall titled "Dismantling Police Violence in a Community Conversation." We have asked for a meeting with Chief Bell and also for him to participate in this panel, including representatives from the Springfield Police Department's Union. The event will take place on Monday, September 29, 2025, at Lincoln Library at 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. The purpose of this town hall is to foster open dialogue between law enforcement and the community, reporting concerns about conduct and to explore pathways toward transformation to justice. We believe that meaningful challenge begins with honest conversation, and your presence and participation from Chief Bell will demonstrate a commitment to transparency, accountability, and community partnership. We understand there have been past disagreements involving Tiara Standage, a member of the Faith Coalition. However, Tiara has expressed willingness to meet the SPD and engage in constructive dialogue. We hope that this town hall can serve as a respectful space for all parties coming together in the spirit of progress. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Tiara Standage.
I also have flyers for everyone for the town hall that the Faith Coalition is organizing. I just want to clarify, I'm the person that's being excluded from the meetings, if nobody caught that, it's me. Hello, I'm Tiara Standage, I am the Executive Director of Intricate Minds, as well as a community leader for the Faith Coalition of the Common Good. I stand before you today deeply frustrated and disappointed, not just on my own behalf, but on behalf of a community that continues to be denied the accountability and transparency it deserves from the Springfield Police Department. Today marks exactly one year since I was choked at a protest, a demonstration that I organized specifically calling for police accountability. I was attacked for standing up for my community, and yet here we are, one year later, still facing the same refusal to listen, the same refusal to be accountable, and the same refusal to change. And this is just not my story. Recently, footage surfaced of the very same officer who choked me violently assaulting another man. In that video, we see him punching and elbowing someone who he has just pepper sprayed and who is on the ground already. Think about that. If this is what he does on camera, imagine what he does off camera. This is not protect and serve, this is abuse. And this is exactly why spaces like the Faith Coalition's Town Hall are so necessary. But instead of stepping up, instead of facing the people harmed by misconduct, SPD leadership continues to hide. Former Chief Scarlett refused to attend a quarterly meeting with the Faith Coalition immediately after I joined and cited me the reason. And now Chief Bell is refusing to attend the upcoming town hall for the same reason, because I am a part of it. I also want to note that Paula Crouch will be on the panel, she accepted her position on the panel. So we will have some representation in the building for police, but we wanted accountability from SPD as well. Let me be clear, this is not just about me. This is about a police department that wants to pick and choose when it is held accountable. That is not acceptable. The town hall was created to dismantle misconduct and give space to the voices of those who suffered at the hands of the police. To refuse to attend is not punishing me, it is punishing the entire community. It tells us if you challenge the police, if you dare to speak out, they will not listen to you. That is not how public service works. They are funded by taxpayers, they serve all of us. They don't get to hide from accountability or just because they're uncomfortable. And let's be real about their excuse. They say, "We've tried to work with her before." What that really means is they tried to use me. They tried to flow a fake diversion program with no real reform behind it, a program that will rely on my free labor to make them look good. And when I stood here before you and said that I would not do unpaid work for the police, that was, that was not refusing to work with them, that was refusing to be exploited. And here's the truth. When SPD leaders face people they cannot control or manipulate, they simply walk away. They avoid conversations, they avoid accountability, that is not leadership, that is cowardice. The future, I mean, I'm sorry, this culture of avoidance is why misconduct continues. This culture is why, a year after I was choked, the same officer is still assaulting people on camera. This culture is why our community keeps losing trust in law enforcement. Council, we cannot allow this to continue. The police should not get to decide when they are held accountable. They should not get to pick and choose which voices matter. If SPD leadership can refuse to show up to a community-organized town hall, what else will they feel entitled to refuse tomorrow? I urge you to take a stand, demand that Chief Bell and SPD attend these town halls and face the public. Show us that community voices matter more than the comfort of police leadership. Because if the police get to decide when and where they answer to people, then accountability is already dead. We cannot let accountability die in Springfield. Not after Sia Massey, not after everything we've seen, not after everything we've survived, not after one year of the same officer escalating to violence immediately without consequences. Thank you.
Ken Pasha.
I think everyone who knows me knows that the phrase "language matters" is something that I live by, and I think language is really important here, because what we're talking about is not exclusion, it's discrimination. See, when you don't want someone at your meetings and you refuse to meet with people that you previously had no problem with because of one person, you're discriminating against that person. Plain and simple. Do you want to know what it is when you dangle a felony over someone's head and try and force them to be a PR puppet for the SPD? It's called extortion. It's called witness intimidation. It's called trying to force community leaders to act as your simp to make you look like you agree with their behavior. I don't agree with their behavior. I watched Officer Peters, a man with long amounts of violence in his history, whether it be a shooting that he happened to get cleared for, of course, to the multiple assaults he's been involved in against members of the public. You know, I was there that day at that protest, and there's been some pretty good photos of me really giving it to the SPD in that protest, because I honestly believe that having a voice against the kind of people that get to use state-sanctioned violence and murder against its citizens is paramount to a society worth living in. Anyone opposing that is opposing the very justice they claim to be employed to hand out to the citizens in this city. Quite frankly, Officer Peters, let me show you the motion you used. Does that look like an empty-handed move to you? Did you see that video? Is that how you de-escalate a situation, is instant aggression? Is it? I'll be quite frank with you, if that's the kind of scene management we're getting from senior 12-year officers, sergeants on our force, we should be embarrassed at the training that they've been employed and the leadership they showed to the rank-and-file underneath them. That man who they beat on camera was being physically assaulted by another citizen directly in front of them, seconds before that. What did they do about that? Did they try and calm the situation, did they try and separate the participants? No, they went directly into getting in his face, being aggressive, being overly aggressive, and then when he resisted, like most people would, they got physical. Because guess what happens when you resist the kind of people who have that authority? They get violent. Do you think I get to get violent in my job? Do you think when people disagree with me, I can just punch them in the face repeatedly and then make excuses about why I'm allowed to do that? And then put out a PR release that is such a mockery of what is on that video? You should be embarrassed that your leadership would put it out to the public. It is an absolute travesty that here we are again, a year to the day, to the city, allowing their SPD to show up with riot shields to protesters who had done nothing up to that point, to word that kind of response. That was previous leadership, and yet we still have an officer in charge who is punishing a citizen for the behavior of that day that his officers aggressively created. This is absolutely a joke to have him march up here and tell us that he's going to openly exclude a member of the public, and most of you sit here in silence and accept that as the God's honest truth that a civil servant, who's supposed to serve and protect, says to that woman, "She's not allowed in these meetings." Why is she not allowed in those meetings? Because you couldn't get her to bite on the PR bite or PR fish you dangled above her lest she catch a felony? It's an absolute joke, an absolute joke that I even have to say anything like this. Those videos, go watch them on my page. Go watch them on my page and go read that PR statement. See if they match up. It's an absolute joke to say that he has the right to discriminate against an entire organization because of one member who did. Where's the charge? Is he avoiding her because of a felony? Did she assault an officer? What exactly is the rationale for excluding her from those meetings?
Address the chair.
Because you would be then giving her the authority that you don't want to grant her as a community representative, as somebody who has the power to speak for the people in this community directly to you. You would have to entertain her thoughts, listen to the things she has to say, and give them value. God forbid we do that. Better we continue this empty, meaningless charade of meeting with community groups while we refuse to actually engage with the community itself. You know, I come up here every week, and I've tried to be a lot more reasonable, but at a certain point, you have to wonder why I'm so upset. It's not just because I want to walk around like this all day, guys.
Jordan Shaw.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Shaw, and I volunteer at Intricate Minds and recently moved to Springfield earlier this summer. Interestingly, today marks the one-year anniversary I've been at Intricate Minds.
Ma'am, can you pull the mic down a little bit closer to your face? Yeah, thank you, you don't have to get right up on it, it's just way up highs.
Are we good?
Thank you.
Okay. One year ago, I was tagged in a post requesting donated items for a participant who had secured housing. I'd gathered donations and planned to drop them off at Intricate one day after work. The day I had chosen happened to be the same day that a protest against police brutality was held at the Springfield Police Department, and police had decided to show up in riot gear and gun Officer, Officer Peters, accosted and physically assaulted the Executive Director of Intricate Minds, Tiara Standage. She was then charged with aggravated battery to a peace officer, the alleged battery happening with water from an open bottle. I had known that the protest was taking place that day, however, did not know about the escalation and the self-fulfilling violent nature of the SPD until I was dropping off donated food, kitchen items, and clothing. In that moment, hearing what happened, I wanted to help in any way that I could. For the past year, I've gathered donations, made harm reduction kits, volunteered serving food, and assisted with protests. Knowing that the tragedy is happening in Springfield from blatant disregard for the safety of others, I cannot in good conscience go, "Oh, well, that's just how things are," and walk away. Now, seeing the abuse empowered escalated again, I, along with many others, have been asked to speak up. I see a distinct pattern of excessive force and abuse in situations that weren't needed. Even with the body cam footage released of the incident on September 6, I still feel that the actions used by the officers, including Officer Peters, were excessive. It's a domino effect of treating citizens less than because of their race, mental health, class, identity, and/or gender. To excuse this would be a detriment to the healing that Springfield has been trying to do for the past year. It is appalling to have an officer who has been known to physically assault a protester, Tiara, then months later intimidate them at a different protest, get the go-ahead to punch and club another person. It is appalling to have this topic be sidelined and questioned again and again and again. Don't justify their abuse towards citizens as a litmus test. The higher the score, the more harm we can deliver. Even in situations where the person is at fault, there is no need to rid them of their autonomy, their dignity, and their humanity. If you want people to be more open with the police department, be willing to communicate and strive towards improving the community, the bare minimum is treating citizens as people rather than means to fill a quota for arrests. Stop hiding behind the undeserved entitlement and false accountability. Try to actually work with the community rather than ignore their concerns and intimidate them into silence. Thank you for your time.
Kayla McGuire.
Police accountability is a requirement, not a request. Eric Gardner, killed in July of 2014 for allegedly selling loose cigarettes. Danielle Ponatello was never criminally charged for murdering Eric Gardner. Michael Brown, killed in August of 2014 for running from the police- Michael Brown, killed in August of 2014 for running from the police. Darren Wilson was not indicted for murdering Michael Brown. Tamir Rice, killed in November of 2014 for playing with a toy gun. Timothy Lowman was never charged for murdering Tamir. He wasn't even fired for that. He was fired for lying on his job application. Alton Sterling, killed in July of 2016 for allegedly selling CDs. Blaine Salamone and Howie Lake II were never charged for the murder of Alton Sterling. Philando Castile, killed in July of 2016 for informing the police he had a legal gun. Jaren Amino Yenes was acquitted of all charges even though he murdered Philando Castile right next to his girlfriend. Stephon Clark, killed in March of 2018 for being in his grandmother's backyard. Terrence... Oh, that's his... I can't pronounce that last name. And Jared Robinette were never charged for the murder of Stephon Clark. Breonna Taylor was killed in March of 2020 for sleeping in her own bed. Two of the three officers that shot into her home that night walk free to this day. Andre Hill, killed in December of 2020, was killed in December of 2020 for holding a phone while leaving a friend's house. This led to the passing of Andre's Law in 2021. Andre's Law requires officers to provide immediate medical aid to injured suspects. Sony Massey, who was killed in July of 2024 for calling for help and following orders. Sean Grayson is currently going through his trial for murdering Sony Massey in her own kitchen. This led to the passing of the Sony Massey Bill, which mandates thorough background checks and the sharing of prior employment information for all prospective police officers in Illinois in 2025. Jakarta Jackson, killed in January of 2025 for fleeing from the police. Brett Taylor stated, "I'll effing shoot you" as he attempted to drag Jakarta out of his car after busting his window open. Brett then later shot Jakarta in his car right in front of his daughter. Jakarta's family are currently fighting for justice because this was found to be a justified shooting. That's 10 lives lost. That's 17 children without a parent. Eric Gardner, Alton Sterling, Philando Castile, Stephon Clark, Andre Hill, Sony Massey and Jakarta Jackson. That's an entire elementary school missing their happy face in the cafeteria, Philando Castile. That's two children themselves with lives lost at the hands of those sworn to protect them, Michael Brown and Tamir Rice. One of those lives were taken in this city, Sony Massey, and another three hours away, Jakarta Jackson. But surprisingly, there is no Sony Massey Day in Springfield, despite the mayor's inclination to do so for others in Springfield. I haven't seen the mayor at any Sony Massey protests, but I have seen her ready for a photo op at any new McDonald's, a company supporting the genocide in Palestine. I haven't heard or seen the mayor make strides to correct how our police force acts, but that's okay because our governor is picking up the pieces she threw away. If you don't want us to think that you're racist, stop acting racist. If you don't want people to think that you don't care about them, stop acting like you don't care about them. Members of the police force not showing up to a community meeting simply because a certain person is present is not okay. Intimidating the citizens is not okay. Silence is compliance. White silence is violence. Show up now. Do not wait for someone you know to be murdered in the street and then it be covered up simply because they have a badge on. If you can't physically show up, speak out. Call out bad behavior and be the change we need in this world. My family is scared for me to speak at these meetings because they think I'm going to be followed home and be harassed or harassed or arrested or killed. That might sound insane, but there are people in this room that have dealt with that. So the fact that we live in a town like that and all and nobody, most people don't have anything to say about it blows my mind. What is my call to action? Do something. Do something or resign. Thank you.
Erin Cahill.
Hey, everybody. So I'm here on three issues tonight. One of them, we're going to beat until it's dead. And that's just the nature of the beast. It's going to be this week. It's going to be next week. It's going to be the following week. But police brutality, police inconsistency and just police doing the wrong thing, period. First, I'm going to start off with that landlord registry. We need it. I've got a kid who is in Hickox Apartments. They are out their fourth management company because the owner won't put any money into the apartments. My kid has endured living there with no heat, no hot water, AC that doesn't work for each apartment. The apartments have been overgrown multiple times. They have had fire doors literally locked shut. Nobody does walkthroughs of this apartment, of this apartment. And the reason I know is because the same things over and over and over again. I go by there almost daily and it's the same crap every freaking day. And guess who? Can't take to court because building and zoning doesn't know exactly who they are. Because they're behind multiple LLCs. Yeah, so let's get that landlord registry going. How about that? Immigration Customs Enforcement, they are less than three hours away from us. We going to do anything to, you know, denounce their crap? They picked up multiple people in this city. And yet silence. It's remarkable. Last but not least, our wonderful SPD. I was almost T-boned yesterday by an SPD officer who was on his phone and ran a red light. Yeah, you're damn right. Yeah. He almost T-boned me. Had I not been paying as much attention as I was, he would have hit me. He may have killed me. He was speeding, ran a red light on his phone. And the officer that I, the sergeant that I got in touch with yesterday, that I was counting on to speak with this guy was none other than an officer who's killed people, who beat the living daylights out of somebody, who yanked a lady back by her hair. And I got to rely on this guy to set somebody else straight? This is getting to be more and more and more of a joke day by day. If we don't figure out how to fix, I'm going to just call for the state police to take over the city's law enforcement. It can be done. It's been done multiple times. It's been done in Chicago. It's been done in Bay St. Louis, Mississippi, where to this day, because they lost trust in their police department, the sheriff's department still patrols their streets. They went in, fired the entire police department. Every one of y'all, get your lockers emptied, get out of here. You're all fired. Yep, they started from scratch. Because they lost that much faith in their law enforcement officers. They were going through a lot of the same things that Springfield is. Theirs were, albeit much more advanced than Springfield's is. But when you got bad actors as part of the law enforcement community, you're going to have bad actors doing bad things to people. I'm not saying that one party was right or wrong. But I have been, I retired from the US military. I was a Texas Army National Guardsman. I dealt with riots in Iraq. I dealt with riots in Afghanistan. We didn't even elbow them in the head. And guess what? They were enemy combatants. We deescalated. We deescalated. And the reason we deescalate is so we don't have incidents where people end up shot. Because I can tell you firsthand, if I'm getting my butt toe up, I'm swinging back. I'm not going to lay there and take an elbow to the head. I'm not going to take a knee to the head after having been pepper sprayed. If you've ever felt that stuff, that stuff hurts and it pisses you off. That all being said, somebody needs to get this under control before the citizens do. Because we will.
Alderman Gregory. Oh, Erin.
This will be for, Erin, I might have, there follow up would be on them Hickox Apartments. I know, I know we've been working on them for some time or whatever. I know you sent me that in January and just not recently, I thought.
I understand they're in court right now. Yeah, as I understand it, they're in administrative court at the moment. I don't know how far along in the process they are, but.
So I do know when you sent me this in January and we talked within a month or so about this place, the grass was hideous. That's all been taken care of. I do know that all of our inspectors did go into the building.
Okay.
And I can tell you, another apartment owner did call about that, about that, resident did call about that place and, you know, I told him as it was told us, we're going to go in there and send all of our people and it very well may be condemned at that point. And he didn't want it to be condemned because he's like now.
Right.
So I think there was a little progress made on the building. I'll double check on it and see where we're at on it.
Court three did do some work in the, I think at the two week mark. They were like, oh my God, we are screwed. So they left it. And I don't blame them.
Well, I just wanted to let you know, it is on our radar.
I got you.
Follow up and see where we're at on it. I thought we was making some good sound progress even with the original owner who, he's an older guy. You know, so I'll leave it at that, but I am on top of it and I'll follow up with you and see where we're at.
Oh, yeah. I've told everybody I come across, I'm like, dude, just get in touch with Sean. Get in touch with Alderman Gregory. He's been good about staying on the people's backs, so.
All right, I'll follow up with you. I got you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory.
No problem.
Next speaker. Rosanna Polito.
Zach Long.
Good evening, everybody. You know, like most of us, probably watched the video that happened on Sunday in its full entirety today. That's what I wanted to do is look at it in its entirety. And it still looked as bad as it looked without it being in its entirety. I've dealt with Officer Peters on calls before. I have no personal distrust in him, but I will say the tactics that were being used by him, I mean, I know plenty of police officers that wouldn't have done that. And I told him I thought it was too much. I mean, when you sitting over here, I'm thinking the guy is being super combative, which he was at one point. But at the point in time when this man went and sat down on the steps, I just feel when you sit over here and you coming at me with cuffs in one hand, mace in another, I'm sitting here not doing nothing. Then you got your other partner who just pulled up to scene. I'm running at you with cuffs now telling you you're under arrest. As a sergeant, hey, you back up. I got this. You still going to jail, my man, but we going to deescalate this and talk this down. And none of that was given to this man. And I feel like as a society, unfortunately, people that may have some type of mental illness, some type of addiction, some type of whatever that causes them to act out in that way, we as a society tend to just throw them people to the side because they're not normal. And dignity is given out. Now, the police, they want grace. They want grace for us to be compliant. They want grace for us to stand there and listen to them and do this and do that. I've had police officers that ain't gave me that grace from the jump, but you still want me to respect you and you done came up to me arguing with me and I ain't even done nothing. I done had it on the other end where I've been the aggressor to an officer and they ask for the same. I try to get at to them. I don't feel like this man got that. First off, who owns the damn dog? Didn't nobody even get that far? We know this man telling the truth. We don't know. And my whole thing is when you see that the man is not listening to what you doing, you coming at him, first off, I don't think the officer should have been out there by himself in the first place. Once you get to the steps, like I said, I'm going to talk you down while I'm talking you down, that's deescalation. And then my backup comes, now we can finish the whole situation as a whole, get the other people back. And if you can hear in the video, to me, seemed like the people that called the police was telling the police they was wrong. I heard plenty of people say, what y'all doing? So we all know that's wrong. We all know that there's tactics that need to be improved. As somebody who's worked on the committee with the Sony Massey Commission, I've reached out to Alderman Gregory, I've reached out to my Alderman, Alderwoman. And I think a lot of things have been spoken up, you know, we need a more community based response, whether that be strengthening the memorial mental health situation or whatever it is. But we have to have some type of diversion to stop these non-emergent calls. Because I'm pretty sure if we have community resources somewhere, somebody who's trained, licensed specialist that is in the community, that grew up in the community, that knows the people of the community, that has the specific skills, that person being a familiar face, maybe old boy over there wouldn't have acted out of his mind. Now you there to help deescalate the situation. Hey, I know this man. Whatever the situation is, he's an addict, he's alcoholic, whatever, or he has mental illness. I've seen this man in his entirety. Let me talk to him. Now you got the police over here in case something goes awry, whatnot, but I really feel like that's something that should be adopted. And my thing is, you know, I don't know. It just, I don't know. It just sounds crazy. What if this man would have had, went in cardiac arrest? Now we sitting over here talking about George Floyd Part Two. All because somebody, to me, it looked like a power control. That's what it was. My man wasn't complying. I'm going to make you comply and I'm going to make an example out of you. And when they got him down, y'all still putting y'all knees in his back and doing all this kind of crazy thing. I'm just going to say, both of them officers was not that little. They telling, you telling me that man was that superhuman? I don't think so. And I'm just saying, as a sergeant, I just think that there should have been a little bit more command to the under officer. Hey, man, you do this or do that. There was no communication nowhere. It was just get on the ground. You're under arrest. You're under arrest. You're under the arrest. But that's my two cents. I just hope that, you know, we can all come together. Garrett and had disagreements and things, I would not not work with her because of a disagreement between her and me. All are trying to get to the same piece of the puzzle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Broderick.
Hello, I'm Valerie Broderick from Chatham. And I'm representing the Good Trouble Alliance, a local group I started, which is committed to non-violence, democracy and human decency. I'm here because police accountability matters on all three of these counts and because of my own concern for my neighbors. I'm admittedly a little bit of an outsider to this case, but I remember the first time I heard about Sony Massey. Rewatching the footage over and over, trying to see any possible justification for her slaughter. Coming up empty and thinking, how did this happen in my own community where I grew up? Where as a kid, the cops stopped me on the way to the bus stop and told me school was canceled, driving away with a wink and saying, see, we're not all bad. It was a moment that was so innocent, a moment that at the time I took for granted. But do our neighbors who are black get that same luxury when they are approached by police? That little wink as the cop drives off? The feeling that the community is safe and watched over? Or do they have to go away with another feeling? Do they have to go away in fear for their lives? Now that I'm an adult, I see the world through a new lens. And I would say to that cop, no, you're not all bad. But it doesn't take all of you. It only takes one. One bad cop. One careless hire. One person not held accountable. Or even one good cop doing nothing. To end the life of an innocent human being and to... To end the life of an innocent human being and to enable the abuse of our black neighbors. To put fear into their children rather than a wink. That's why I want to speak before you and say that it is not okay with me if police are not held accountable for their actions. I stand with Tiara Standage. Tiara was grabbed by the hair and choked by an officer at a protest that got a little heated. One year later, the same officer is caught on video, as you've heard everybody testify, participating in an arrest where billy sticks and heavy force were used. And yet, S P D leadership still refuses to show up and answer to this community after all of that. If police are continually allowed to be the bad guys, then residents of Springfield cannot feel safe in their own communities. And let me rephrase that. Because of the pattern of continual abuse by those who are meant to protect us, people do not feel safe in their own communities. Please listen to Tiara. It's time to stop discussing and start doing. Please hold officers accountable. Please have them answer to the community they serve. And I want to say to the chief, I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry if Tiara hurt your feelings, but you're the one with the badge. You're supposed to be a leader of the community and help fill this hole that is in all of our hearts. Please step up and do your job. Make Springfield safe for everyone. Thank you.
Bree Roberts.
Uh, first I just want to know, although I understand the intention was good, um, asking us to be respectful when we are continuously surrounded by the people that are being abusive to us is kind of insane to me. Anyways, um, I'll just go ahead and say it, not that it needs to be said, but I very much don't support anybody's abusive behavior, which means I would also not support the excessive force that the police shown in that video. Open hand and empty hand techniques are used for control, such as palm strikes to target areas, wrist locks and physical blocks. This doesn't include jabbing somebody repeatedly in the side with your knee or shoving a baton into their side, especially after they're on the ground. It's like clockwork in this town where we have repeated patterns. We look at these patterns and assume they'll eventually end in the same way, where we never saw this coming is the only excuse that the community has ever given and it's brushed away. I would be lying through my teeth if I said those who haven't spoken on this matter shocked me because it's the same people every time and they don't look like me. I would really expect somebody to start asking the real questions as to what the actual problem is because when the citizens come up here and we beg and plead, nothing happens. And I've said that maybe, I don't know, a hundred times on this podium and nothing has happened. Officer Peters really seems to thrive in an environment of intimidation, lying and force. Whether it's choking Tiara, sitting in the back of city council to try to intimidate us during some of the meetings, and now on video beating somebody with a baton. It's, it looks like that's where he wants to be. He wants that power over us because nobody's checked his power. So he just keeps running with it because of unchecked authority. And this man in between these instances has still been allowed to represent the Springfield police in our school district and talk to children. If I had kids in school and knew Officer Peters was there to represent the safety and protection of Springfield, I would pull my child out of school. But that's what Springfield holds true. We can never expect this city to understand the real meaning of accountability and transparency because those who have the ability to do something about it don't even see the issue in the first place. We don't reprimand them for their bad behaviors. And then we're given a press release that states the body cam footage was reviewed and it was all appropriate behaviors. And my question is, did we use Axon's A I technology that we paid 5.8 million dollars last November to review this body cam footage? Or was this a human decision? Because either way, it was the wrong answer. I just think it's hard to expect an average person to truly feel safe and protected by police when we are actively needing to be protected from the police. The history of police systems and the systemic abuse continues to perpetuate something that we can't just keep turning a blind eye to year after year. We have all these conversations about the increase of crime and guns and the deterioration of the east and north side while we continue to ignore the fact that policing does not reinforce good behavior. It does not rehabilitate offenders and it does not help those experiencing mental health crisis. The system is extremely outdated and controlled by people who have benefited from this lack of attention. Who polices the police if those who can do something do nothing? Nobody. They police themselves. And again, that's what? Unchecked power. How can we feel like the city will be able to develop trusting relationships with the police when they are refusing to go to community-led meetings? When they are refusing to work with a member of the community because of personal differences that was caused by one of their officers? I don't understand how we're forgetting that. And the failed attempt to make Tiara a P R stunt is smoke and mirrors that we're not too dumb to see. Springfield is full of really smart people and I am constantly feeling like we are being played for our intelligence. I would normally use the end of my speech to give some examples of what other cities have done, but quite honestly, I am tired of giving you resources and information and it not being used. Lastly, I just want to say, if it walks like a pig, talks like a pig and beats people on camera and then releases a falsified statement, it's a pig.
Jeremy Banks.
Hello, bear with me, this is my first time in one of these meetings. My name is Jeremy Banks. I'm the owner of the Spence Barber Shop and Salon. I also volunteer our intricate minds as a barber. I've done hundreds of free cuts for our community. I'm thirty-five, I've been here since two thousand and seven, so I'm pretty much from here. I have so much to say about the people that's supposed to protect and serve our community, but instead violate our rights on a daily, target our black communities. These police have illegally searched my car, illegally raided my home, illegally harassed me and my family and friends on multiple occasions. Just last year, these same police searched my friend's car and assaulted him and took his legal firearm, which he had concealed carry before. He wishes not to be mentioned in his speech because he's scared of being targeted, but I'm not. We are tired of police opening our car doors, snatching us up out of our vehicles without probable cause. These same police officers took it upon themselves to illegally raid my home in twenty twenty-one and take me away from my family for almost thirty months. I can't get that time back with my kids. They snatched my kids from underneath their bed. I want to reference, if you want to reference this incident, you can look up Jeremy Banks versus USA. It is time to do something that's done. Please, ladies and gentlemen, let's come together and expose these officers for everything they do wrong, from speeding without sirens, illegally searching our vehicles. What I seen the other day assault and battery to our people, no matter if you're black, white, Latino, we are all humans. Thank you for your time and stay blessed.
Amber Mailer.
Hello, my name is Amber Mailer and I live in Springfield, Illinois, Ward five, Vinegar Hill. Uh, you probably don't recognize me, I just moved here a year ago. And forgive me if I code switch a little bit into my Texas accent. I was born and raised in Waller County, Texas. If you don't know where that is, then maybe you know the name of the black woman who died there, Sandra Bland. She was pulled over for not using her turn signal and then jailed. And because of police not monitoring her health and safety in jail, she was found dead by suicide three days later. She was on her way to Prairie View A and M University. Her death in twenty fifteen radicalized me in my own way. And here I stand ten years later, still saying the same thing and seeing black people get treated differently than I do when I interact with the police. And that's disgusting. So, here I am in Springfield, I'm engaged in pro-democracy organizations, mutual aid initiatives here. But I'm coming before you not for an organization, but as a fellow human, as your neighbor, as someone who's very worried that the same things that happened in the racist little county that I grew up in in Texas are gonna happen right here in Illinois. All right? According to the N double A C P, fatal police shootings in the United States have been increasing, steady, 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 since twenty seventeen. Year after year, they've been tracing this, but we, we've got decades of data. Black people are almost three times more likely than white people to be killed by police in the U.S. A black person is five times more likely to be stopped by police without just cause than a white person. And all you have to do is turn on the news and see what happened with SCOTUS yesterday. And I think things are gonna get a lot worse for black, indigenous, people of color, Hispanic people, people everywhere as the time goes on. Now, these statistics among others have shown for decades that systemic racism plays a huge role in unjust police practices. It is frustrating to me to check the data today and see that there has only been one day so far in twenty twenty-five where the police in the United States have not killed someone. I moved to Illinois last year in June twenty twenty-four, just weeks before seeing the horrific footage of Sean Grayson murdering Sonia Massey in her own home. The whole world knows Sonia should still be alive. Illinoisans believe that Grayson should receive the maximum sentence for his crimes, just like any other citizen. But the N double A C P reports very few of these police are ever actually held accountable. Very, very few. Whereas we have almost a thousand people a year in the U.S. die from police brutality. So even though Sean Grayson is no longer on the force actively harming, removing one bad officer obviously has not fundamentally changed the pattern of police evading accountability or their patterns of brutality. This community has been watching. Even if we can't always be here in person, we watch these meetings online. We watch our streets. We notice who shows up when invited and we notice who doesn't. We talk. We keep track of the Massey Commission's accomplishments to improve police accountability and they should be funded to continue their good work. We celebrated the passing of House Bill nineteen fifty-three, which requires stricter background checks for police hires, but we also know that's only the first step. I came to ask for the police and their affiliates to please do more. You will see more of me up here. I moved here and I always am the type of person that's gonna get involved in my community. So, I stand with Tiara Standage. Please show up when leaders like Tiara Standage of the Faith Coalition for the Common Good ask you to. Please show up to the Community Town Hall on dismantling police misconduct that is being held on September twenty-ninth at five thirty P M at the Lincoln Library Carnegie Room. Let me just repeat that. Please show up to the Community Town Hall on dismantling police misconduct being held on September twenty-ninth at five thirty P M at the Lincoln Library Carnegie Room. If you want to commit to making police practices safer for all of us in Sangamon County, then I expect to see you working with our community and our leaders. And Tiara Standage is a leader. Thank you for your time.
Kaitlin Weis. Kaitlin Weis.
She must not be here.
Brianna Day.